January twenty second at six P M. We are going to start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance offered by Commissioner Hill.
We will now do a roll call.
Commissioner Shin.
Adam Shin, no conflicts.
Barbie De Soto, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere through audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing. We will now start with item number one. Development Services requests ordinance text amendments to Title fourteen with regards to multifamily amenities. Citywide application. Hannah Salz will present this item. Thank you.
Hello, I'll try to keep this brief. If anyone would like more information than what we're going into tonight, this was discussed in the Planning Commission meeting on August twenty eighth and the study session on December eleventh. Some quick context before the discussion and vote. This came from the council debating how to get more E V charging in multifamily developments, what the best mode for that was. Development Services came up with the suggestion that we encourage this and other city priorities through this scored menu approach that's a little bit more hands off and still gives developers flexibility to customize their projects to their their target residents. It creates this list of amenity, gives each a score and sets a minimum score that developers have to reach. Each instance of an amenity counts for each occurrence toward that minimum score, creates this clarifies existing requirements and communicates our priorities as a city, but still gives them some flexibility and we get some department flexibility on allowing substitutions as well for anything that's not on the list. It doesn't create a full green development package, does not require E V charging, doesn't require any specific amenities and in general doesn't change the required total amenity space by zone, except that we are proposing to change that as part of this amendment, just for two where we thought over time, different numbers were more appropriate. As shown on this graph, the chart, table. Here is the list of the proposed scores for the amenities. These were chosen largely based on usefulness to residents, cost to the developer, footprint, priorities of the city and the departments, and then a small survey of the council and their priorities. Those were factored in as well. Then scores were adjusted as made sense. You can see E V and open stays for pets and pet waste rank highly because those are city priorities. The full proposed text is also in the packet for tonight, so I'm not going to linger too long on these slides, but it is here for reference if we would like to discuss anything. General feedback on this before your discussion again is from developers. This was very feasible. It shouldn't add too many hurdles for their development process. Bigger developers liked the transparency on city priorities. Smaller developers wanted it to be limiting and or didn't want it to be limiting and so wanted more flexibility built in, which is what we were planning on. We have accommodated and met all of their concerns. There were some some who didn't think the E Vs would be very useful or that five percent of E V spaces, five percent of spaces being E V to qualify for the threshold of points was too high, but those were the minority. Most were fine with it. If they don't feel like E Vs are the right fit for their development, they'll put in another amenity. The general consensus was that good developers are kind of doing this anyway, and the market is trending there. We as staff agree, but we still find value in communicating the city's priorities and setting this minimum threshold for those developers who are not following these market trends as closely. Any questions from the commission?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Jensen.
Thought it was interesting in the things that you said, the smaller developers were concerned about the city acting like H O A. And I'm just wondering, how do we justify making requirements like this? In what way is the city not acting like an H O A? Is it because these meet our general plan goals or because these contribute to better quality of life for our residents? Like, how do we, how do we justify making these requirements? This is more of a curiosity than a deal breaker, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think both of those are true. These do meet general plan requirements, the ones that are more highly valued. And we are also giving a lot more flexibility for developers. We're not going to come in like an H O A and say your playground has to be this color, this dimension, anything like that. We're allowing a large degree of flexibility. They just have to prove to us that they're providing minimum amenities for their tenants. They're justifiable for the kind of tenants that they're hoping to attract for the sake of quality of life.
Okay.
Commissioner Shin.
I have a question. I think in our work meeting last month, we talked a little bit about a study about some recent recent developments that we were looking at to see if they had, if they would meet the threshold for these requirements already or not. And I think that, I think the takeaway was that we, we saw that most of the these multifamily projects on the high end of the market and in the mid range of the market already were meeting these, that they would already have met the requirements already. And it was mainly just developments on the lower end entry level kind of rental market that was that would not already be meeting these requirements. Is that, is that accurate? Kind of what we found?
I think that's fair to say. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Seeing as the city is the applicant, we will now hear, open the hearing to public comments. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, they will have three minutes to comment. The general public will have two minutes to comment. When your time is up, you'll hear ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If you have questions, we'll invite you to come forward at that time. All right, I'll go ahead and say seeing no further public comments, we will now close the public comments and open it up to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Soto.
I, we've already gone through so much of this, but I, I just wanted to make a point that I do, I do understand why the city is wanting pet spaces to be included, but I also feel like that doesn't mean that we shouldn't think about as a city also providing them in public parks as well, because the, what can happen in those community spaces that aren't just like these private spaces is also important. So I just wanted to say that and have it on the record, I guess.
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, we just talked in our work meeting about not creating restrictions that inadvertently drive up the cost of housing. We're trying to encourage affordable housing. Are we worried at all that requiring amenities will do this if we require it across the board on every project? Just be in this.
Well, those aren't free.
They're not free, but at the same time, if you're a small time developer doing just a few units, there are ways to get over the threshold with some pretty low cost options here. This isn't a deal breaker.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we weren't setting ourselves up for regret.
Fair question, though. Commissioner.
Thanks. I had a couple of thoughts. I think we've been talking about this one for a while and, and city staff has put a lot of thought into it. And so I think it's worth, yeah, I'm glad we can talk about this one. I think from my point of view with this one, it, it comes down to the push and pull of like, you know, how much do we want? You know, do we rely on the free market to judge the value of different amenities, right? Versus how much do we feel like we need to, to nudge the market in a specific direction? And it comes down like, you're saying like the cost of what people want versus what they're willing to pay for. And, you know, I, like, I, I rent an apartment right now, you know, and like, there's amenities. We have a pool. We have different stuff, some things that I, that we use and some things that we don't use, but like, at the end of the day, it's, it's like my rent that's paying for, that's paying for those amenities. And if, you know, if the developer feels like based on the market that that's something valuable that they want to build, you know, I think that's, that's fine. But I guess I, I, I question, I wonder how much the role is for the city to be, to be making those kinds of decisions on behalf of, of, of tenants, you know? Like, I think there's a way of thinking it that like, you know, we're here, this kind of of like regulation would help negotiate better deals for tenants, right? Like it negotiates a better, you know, better quality of life or, you know, we're raising the bar for, for our entry level housing. I guess my question is like, how much of that are we also like, you know, are we also raising the barrier to entry for this kind of, you know, the, the lower end of the market housing? Are we actually like removing people's ability to negotiate themselves for the things that they value the most based on what they're willing to pay, you know? And letting them vote with their, with their wallets and vote with their feet for where they want, where they want to live and how much they want to pay for rent. I think Commissioner Whitlock mentioned in our work, our work meeting a while ago about living in a small like townhouse, row house project, where I think he said that like basically if there was any kind of outdoor space, it would have had to come at the cost of a parking unit or like a parking lot or a driveway, which probably would mean losing a unit if you can't have enough parking like. So like the, the trade offs here is like, if, if we do put new barriers up that could, you know, reduce the number of units that you know, a, a project could actually deliver, that's where I'm a little bit concerned about it. And I think where I'm inclined to to, to, to feel like not voting for this. Just because if, if we know that our mid level and our high range markets are already delivering what we are hoping for here. I just, I feel like it's, I'd be hesitant to put new roadblocks of any kind in the way of people who want to build like really on the, on the, on the affordable, the lower rent end of things, you know, like if somebody wants to build a project without all these amenities or with, with, with less than what we would require here. And if somebody wants to rent that and they're happy to do that, you know? I don't know that it's, it's necessarily helps us to say that we need to step in on, on their behalf and say, oh, you actually need some more of this, you need more of that. So, yeah, I, I guess, you know, my hesitance comes down to that, like how much of our role is to step in on behalf of people versus let the market decide.
Thank you. Commissioner De Soto.
As I say, I, I see where you're coming from, but I have, I have, I have two minds, I feel like on this because I understand also that just because you're on a lower price point doesn't mean you should have a really crappy experience renting. And also, if we want people to stay around and invest a little longer in their neighborhoods, I think it needs to not just be a place that people are really eager to get out of. And I think that that's part of, it is balance, it's something you have to balance, I think, but Commissioner South's comments that like some of these lower cost ones would make, would make it work for them, for some of these places. And and that kind of gives me some reassurance because he's, he understands the real costs of these things. So for what it's worth.
What, just if you had to take a total swag, what would you say is like the cost per, for like a twenty? Because this triggers at twenty units, right? For most, I think all, which by the way, thank you, except for very low density residential. Thank you, by the way, for taking the feedback on bumping up. I think that was feedback the commission gave. But yeah, what would you say Commissioner South is like just a swag, like costs, total cost addition to a project of like twenty units to hit the sixty point threshold? If you, if you did it with the low, least dollar value per point ones.
I'd have to go through each one and think and add some values.
I was thinking about putting it to chat G P T and seeing if it could do the analysis for us, but.
Well, look, look at this.
Probably can, honestly.
Open, open space for pets and pet waste, forty two points. And bike repair station, twenty points. Well, I can't imagine either one of those costs very much money.
Yeah, and.
So.
There's an opportunity cost side, right? On the, the open space, but.
Yeah, but it doesn't say a percentage, like you could have a little teeny.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a good question. Like, is it literally any amount? There's no.
Do we need to put a number on that? Do we want it to be large enough for a dog?
My gerbil, it's my gerbil.
A dog run where they can't, it's more like a cage. That sounds terrible.
I have some things I like about it.
Yeah, please.
I like that the amenity requirements are percentages of spaces or units or it makes it so that it's not the same requirement for small developments and large developments. It's a percentage of their space. I, I like that. And I also like that there's built in flexibility for things that aren't on the list to be approved by the Development Services Director. I tend to lean more towards what Adam was saying about concerns that this puts the cost up, but I also agree with Barbie that it's, it's a place, I want it to be a place that you want to live in, so I'm torn about which ones are business. So those are my thoughts.
I, I already said this, but I'll just say it again. I do appreciate the, the city took the feedback that we gave in the working session on the N M U and then the D T two. Sounds, I think those were increased to twenty from five to ten. Makes me more comfortable with this. Any other thoughts? What are we feeling? Do we want a straw poll or, sorry, Commissioner De Soto? Do you have a comment? No.
Unless someone's really opposed to it, I feel comfortable recommending this to move on to the city council. With, I mean, they'll hear our concerns. Hannah can pass those along and and if they don't feel their concerns, then this is their idea anyway. I don't think it's a deal breaker for me. Is it a deal breaker for someone else?
I have, I do have similar reservations, just kind of from what Adam was saying philosophically, but, but I also think it's not, I have no, I, yeah, I, I also understand what the city's trying to do. And, and I, I feel a lot more comfortable with it with some of the changes that, and the feedback they took in.
And I think, I think the market will also show if it works or not. And I think that the concerns that were expressed by developers can mostly be answered by saying choose a different amenity.
Yeah, just switch the amenities.
You know, don't choose that one. Then if you don't like it, if you don't believe in it. So I'm not super worried that there's going to be an angry outcry.
Commissioner South.
I was just gonna say, I think it is an, I mean, like Commissioner Whitlock said, we can see what this council is trying to do and this is the kind of thing where I think it's appropriate for the city to show some leadership and say, this is what we're trying to accomplish. We definitely have residents out here that are interested in it, rather than being reactive to what, you know, a, a dearth of electric vehicles, charging stations, for example, let's provide capacity to do that. So the city doesn't provide capacity, either institutional infrastructure or encourage private infrastructure for that, you know, it may not, you know, who's, who's going to get that started?
Yeah, it's a good point. Anyone willing to make a motion?
I will.
All right.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one. Development Services requests ordinance text amendments to Title fourteen with regards to multifamily amenities. With the understanding that staff will pass along our, just our concerns from our discussion.
Thank you. Any second on that motion?
I'll second.
All right, the motion has a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, in that case, let's vote. Commissioner Shin.
Nay.
Aye.
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 All vote aye. Uh, the motion passes seven, one. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will now move to item number two on the agenda. Nathan Gregory requests a zone map amendment from R one eight zone to the R one six zone in order to create a two lot residential subdivision located at nine sixteen west, eleven fifty south Lakewood neighborhood. All right, staff will present this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitlock. Um, so this item is very straightforward. Here we just have the aerial map of the property in question. Uh, it's, as you can see, currently a single family lot with a very large backyard. It's surrounded on three sides by the R one eight zone and then to the north it has the R A zone. This rezone is just to bring the minimum width requirement down from eighty feet to sixty feet so that they could fit a flagpole lot, a drive access to the rear portion where a home would be put. Um, with this rezone and potential subdivision, both homes or both lots would still be at over eight thousand square feet. So we're not expecting any negative impact to the neighborhood. It's, it would be one additional single family. We did receive some positive feedback from the neighborhood chair, uh, saying that the people she had spoken to about it were all for this rezone. Um, and then here's just the proposed layout where the, uh, property owner would remove the current parking, put that at the rear of his existing home, and then you can see where the drive access would be, and then the proposed single family home would be added to the lot. Uh, are there any questions?
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, my question when I went through this was why not just apply for a variance for the lot width instead of having funky zoning?
That's, that's a good question. Um, one of the biggest things is that the variance, you have to prove a hardship for that, and it wouldn't necessarily be a hardship since he already has a single family home on the lot.
Okay. And also it looks to me like the garage is going to get smaller when it gets moved to the side. Is it just going to be a long, narrow garage?
Um, so the plan is to get rid of the existing garage and then go to a, a single carport instead of the two car garage. So it would be smaller.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Uh, we will now invite the applicant forward to, um, present your item. Uh, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear ding and the microphone will be muted. Following your presentations, we will ask questions.
Hello, my name is Nathan Gregory, um, and so I'm the one that is going through with both these applications for and the rezone as well as the concept plan. And, and so I don't know, I don't know if you guys were able to check it out, but a few houses over, just a few um, houses over at um, they actually did a similar thing, but obviously at their house, they actually had eighty feet. So it's an R one point eight zone, um, for both of those homes. So that's a difference there. Um, but if we go over, I should have had this right here, to nine sixteen west. Okay. And the difference, we, we're trying to do the same thing to allow better use of the lot, um, because right now, the way that we see it is that there's, there's three different options. Um, talking with the planning commission, we could actually put townhomes in the back if we wanted to, and that would be under code, um, nine townhomes. That's one option. Another option would be to leave it as is, um, and this picture may not show everything, but it's, it's almost like a junkyard. There's a lot of stuff back there and maybe a nice orb for some people may not, um, but just leave it as is, as not being used for, for much of anything. And then the third option, um, is to subdivide it into another lots where potentially we can have another house back there, um, that can be used to add to the community and, and to the other homes and, and, and be, be a neighbor, um, to them as well. Um, but yeah, so I, that's, that's all I have to say, I guess, right now, like Jessica was saying, it is pretty straightforward. Um, so I'm open to, to hearing questions if you guys have questions for me specifically. Um, but I wasn't planning on saying a whole lot. I was just planning on just being brief about, about that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
You said it would be allowed in code to put nine townhomes? That, that doesn't sound right. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Gregory and I had several meetings on this and we looked at many different alternatives from the variance option, which didn't seem like it would work to an L D R rezone, which would be the nine townhomes, to the R one six rezoning. So, yeah, we had many meetings on this and looked a lot of different options, but they would all take a, a zone change except for the variance possibility.
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, what guarantee do we have that more, not more than two units will be developed? Because if we, if we say, yeah, R one six, it's a big enough lot, you could put at least one more in there, I think.
Yeah, so originally that was actually my plan was I'm like, hey, just like they did a few houses over, I want to put two different houses back there to make better use of the land. Um, but as far as the text amendment that I got back, I needed to have more width. I needed to have twenty feet of driveway width for that subdivided lot to have two in the back. I needed to have twenty feet of driveway width for that subdivided lot to have two in the back, which I didn't have to still have sixty feet of frontage for the current home. Um, and so because of that, um, we, we had fifteen feet to allow for one subdivided lot. Um, and so that's why we're only able to do one, one subdivided lot. Um, so the guarantee, I guess, is that, yeah, under code, we're, we're actually not allowed to do um under what was written for the change code that I saw, we're actually not allowed to do two lots under that code that we're, we're going through, that we're looking at.
So it's not even a possibility to do more than two?
Yeah, it's not even a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kendall?
And that's correct.
Yes, it is.
Is that related to the recent changes to flag lot code that we looked at recently?
Yes, even with the recent change, a second lot would require more, a wider flag staff than he has room to provide.
Okay, okay.
He could tear down the existing house and do more than two units, however, right? It's only that that we're building around an existing structure?
No, because the house out front, even if you tear the house down, you need to have sixty feet of frontage with that.
Okay.
In the R one six zone.
Okay.
And that's his limiting factor.
Okay, so it's not just that the house needs to be smaller, so it has the proper setbacks, so there's enough driveway. It's actually the frontage, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, we will now open the hearing to public comments. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, you can have three minutes, I don't think there are. Um, and unless uh the other Gregory wants to speak, I think there's no public comments. So I'll now close public comments uh and open it up to a commesh, uh, commission discussion. Commissioner Jensen?
I love the creative solutions for filling in these um deep lots. If you look at the the map that's attached to this, what is it, page five? You can see that on the backside of it, there's two more of these. And somebody just to the top left corner of this property has done it in kind of a diagonal idea with a double flag lot back there. It looks like maybe four doors down, there, those lots would be big enough to maybe subdivide and do two. And so knowing that otherwise we're just going to have this weird middle space short of somebody buying the whole center section up, re-dividing all of the property pieces and coming in from that stub road on the left. I feel like this is a a nice cozy solution to building a neighborhood one lot at a time. So as much as I don't like rezoning it to R one six, it is compatible with the R A being the adjacent zone. It's not like we're making a huge density jump. Um, it's, and it accomplishes purposes that city council values and that we value and that the general plan has stated as values, so. Knowing that nothing higher density could possibly go in there with the current frontage, I'm comfortable with it.
Perhaps.
Perhaps I should have asked this earlier, but given um kind of the conversations we've been having, is there any agreement to sell this or is it for rent? I don't think we asked this, probably. Do we know from the applicant?
Um, my discussions with the applicant and he can come back up if he wants, the plan is to subdivide to sell.
To sell, okay. Is that correct? Okay, we're good.
I wish there was an opportunity to make it even more dense. Like this is the kind of thing that we need to put pocket neighborhoods into. It's not a big one, but why can't we have four eight hundred and fifty square foot units accessible from that right there? Like, yeah, that's like, I'm totally in favor of this, but it does not go far enough. And we need to provide opportunities to do that.
We also are working within the parameters that the West Side has for units per acre, so there may be limitations on that as well.
But I totally agree, I mean, this is directly ties to the conversation we just had.
Yeah, I'll just say I share the same sentiments as Commissioner South.
Me too.
Is there like, is there like, I guess, um, is it, what's the limiting principle or or is it the general plan for not going more aggressive here?
It's the lot frontage.
Yes, the zoning requirements for frontage per lot.
But could you, for example, if you zoned it at a more dense zone? Is it just?
To go to do a more dense zone, you'd have to do V L D R or L D R.
Yeah.
And in those zones, you can do single family, you can do single family in those zones. But I think you're still going to end up with that limited frontage on eleven fifty south. We get in the way of a lot of different alternatives. We agree with what Mr. South has just said, we looked at ways to put two lots back there. But I felt like um the amendment we just went through with the flag lot was pushing it about as far as we could go with the different city departments that have a hand in all of this. We agree, we'd love to get another lot back there, we just could not figure out a way to do it.
I'd also just like to say that it is R one ten and R one eight in this area, so.
Yeah.
You don't want to make too much of a of a transitional jump. At least in my opinion, I feel like you should be more gradual, so that this is a better gradual jump for me.
Now, perhaps we need more, we need less zones that cover more, more, more spectrum.
And that's a good discussion to have with our upcoming zoning rewrite.
I I guess what I'm, what I'm curious about is is this a uh preferential political decision or is it actually come down to fire or some other safety concern, safety or or technical limitation?
There are technical limitations and mostly having, having more to do with engineering than fire.
Okay.
Because engineering wants each house to have its own water and sewer laterals. There has to be separation, a certain linear, linear, linear separation between those.
Right.
Utilities, and that's what's making this not work more more densely.
Thanks for explaining that.
So that's because that it's a driveway, not a street.
Right.
Okay.
We, is, should we have more discussion or are we feeling like we can move forward with a motion?
Well, I just would like to point out that these ideas that we've had about making it more dense aren't on the table. So they're good things to talk about it with, like how to approach zone changes. But as far as the discussion about the item, does anyone have huge, any problems with it, aside from wanting it to be more dense, aside from a missed opportunity?
I think if it goes to city council, just mention that it, you were talking about nine units and that will make this go down easier.
It's good advice.
I think it's kind of like the item we had, I don't know if it was at our last meeting or the one before where I think it was the last meeting where somebody wanted to do something similar up um in north kind of just between State Street and over by Chef's Table, I can't think of the address, anyway. They all the neighbors were like, we don't want more density, but then when they found out that this could open the doors for them to have the same, they're, oh, we actually want to be able to do that with ours, but we were told we couldn't, you know? So I think that we'll have a similar reaction here where there's quite a few of these properties that could benefit from a similar allowance and it would help them to think creatively. So it may not be eight units on one lot, but we may get six more out of it, you know? Better than zero.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Amazing, thank you.
I recommend that we uh, or I move that we recommend that the Provo City Council um approve Nathan Gregory's request for a zone map amendment from R one point eight to R one point six in order to create a two lot residential subdivision.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Do we need to read the address in for the motion?
You're, you're fine.
Okay.
I'll second. Uh, the motion has a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
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 I'll vote aye, item number two passes unanimously. Unless I'm mistaken, that's the final item of the night, the differences between this meeting and the last one could not be more stark. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second, all those favor?
Aye.